Good evening. Welcome to the City of Douglas, Mayor and Commission. This will serve as our regular meeting, June the 8th, 2020. The next thing on our agenda is the invocation. Commissioner Durham will do the introduction.
Good evening, everyone. The pastor that's going to be bringing for our invocation tonight, she is at Awson, Tawana Bennett, Church of Faith 117. She's a native here of County County in the City of Douglas. Now let's clap a prayer as she comes up to give our invocation.
Amen.
Amen. Good evening, everyone. As you say, I'm Tawana Bennett, Pastor of Faith 117. And I'm going to quote our church scripture. It's coming from Romans 1:17. "For therein is the righteousness of God revealed from faith to faith; as it is written, the just shall live by faith." We're going to pray. Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for this opportunity to stand before your people. First of all, Lord, we just want to acknowledge you, that you are God, that you are Almighty. God, you are everything that we need, and we just thank you, God, because you are always there when we need you. We pray right now today for our governing body all over the world. First of all, I just want to pray for this meeting in my local city, that you're going to do what you want to do, that you are called, oh God, these people that sit on this council, to represent this city. And I just thank you right now, God, for you moving in a mighty way, even in this meeting today. We just declare that there will be a meeting of the minds, that there will be an accomplishment. Oh God, we thank you for this first meeting, because even though it's been shut down sometime, God, you caused us to come back and reset. You caused us to come back and re-look at some things, oh God. And we just thank you for what you're going to do in our governing body today. We pray for all of our leaders, from the executive, the legislation, and the judicial system, God. We pray for everything, God, because in Timothy, he said in his word that we ought to pray for those in leadership, God. And I just pray right now for justice, oh God, for everyone just as Lady Justice, stand before the courthouse, and her arms is extended, representing equal rights, oh God, Lord, that there is no race, no color, no ethnicity, no religion, but everybody according to the Declaration of Independence, that all men are created equal. Father, we pray for leaders all over this city, whether it's the people that's on the council, the mayor, the police force, oh God. We pray for everyone. You know them name by name, oh God. I don't know them, but you know them, God. And we just decree right now that you're going to use every person that's in this place. We pray for even our leaders, whether they are pastors, oh God, that even as you had to deal with me, God, to understand, God, that even the policies that are being enforced, the things that are going forth, they're not only affecting me, but they're affecting the people that we lead, God. And we just thank you, God, for what you're going to do in this place, oh God. We thank you right now that you are establishing everything that needs to be established, and even sometime, you have to go back and re-establish some things. And Lord, we just bless you right now, for all the people that are represented here today, Lord, that we're going to go forth, we're going to have a meeting of the mind, oh God, even though, even that might be a disagreement, God. But Lord, I just pray that we disagree, that we learn to agree or disagree, but God, we can still walk in that fruit called love. And I just thank you in advance, God, for what you're going to do in this meeting. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you so much, Pastor.
Next on the agenda is pledge allegiance to the community. Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great and just as God.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the order of the agenda.
So.
It's the motion in session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is set. The first item on the agenda is item number five, review. Discuss COVID-19 concerns and establishing protocols for the meeting. Commissioner Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of putting that on the agenda is to pause speaker. We have no rules to go by. And as a matter of fact, as you all know, when we were asked about having a meeting, I, as well as Commissioner Durham, stated that we were in favor of having virtual meetings. So I see that you responded to my, you responded to the email you sent out, but you didn't respond to the email you sent out, an email stating the various things that you think should be implemented, being that we are in the era of COVID-19. And I responded back that I thought that that would have been something we would have discussed before actually having a public meeting. So at this time, I guess since you sent to the mayor and council, to the rest of the council, that what you were proposing in terms of a meeting, I'd just like to hear what the rest of the council has to say, and how we'd like to move forward, considering we are in the midst in the era of COVID-19. Because I believe, is my position, that we could hold our meetings virtually, like so many other cities are doing. And as a matter of fact, the training I had last week with GMA, they stated that on June the 9th or 10th, they were going to be contacting all the cities about having virtual meetings. So that was my reasoning for getting on the agenda concerning COVID-19.
Okay. Do you have any recommendations as to how we conduct the meeting?
Well, what I think we should do, since, you know, I don't have anything right now, but I do think we should actually, I'm in favor of having virtual meetings until the COVID-19 passes. That's what I'm in favor of. But if we are not going to do virtual meetings, then one thing y'all recommend today is with the taking of temperatures, I guess that's okay. We're trying to have people spaced out. I hope that's okay. But it's actually in this facility here, larger than our chamber. But we don't have any air here, I don't think, or maybe it's just me. The sound system, I don't know how well that's working. Basically, I think you need to try to give it some more thought, everybody, and put some thought into it before we actually come back for a public meeting. I don't know how long the air might be off in here, because like I say, it's larger in here than our council chamber. But we've got to definitely get some air, and we've got to definitely get our sound system working. So basically, I'm just in favor of trying to do the virtual meetings until we can hopefully get things more equipped to operate under, and more specifically, to get that COVID-19 number down.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, could you speak to the capabilities of us holding a virtual meeting? Since Commissioner Pearson said about a virtual meeting.
As far as holding a virtual meeting, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's ready to go. I mean, you always got to be able to operate with PCs, or cell phones, or whatever, remotely, from wherever you're at. I mean, just whether it's the Zoom, or whether it's Microsoft meetings, or Microsoft Teams meetings, we've got a couple different platforms people can use on that. The issue comes, like I've been on several meetings, is it's really the user, because we do the Zooms, the Microsoft, I mean, they're ready to go. Like the other day, I said, when Georgia Tech, the other day, half of Georgia Tech students couldn't sound on to the Zoom. So that really becomes the issue.
So are we able to invite the public in?
You have X amount of slots that you can do. I mean, I can't remember how many slots that we have.
A thousand people that can get on.
On the Microsoft, it does X amount of slots, and then you get into, if it's an individual purchase, if it's a business purchase, they all have different. And so I think, and she's in the room, she may correct me, but I think up to 40 or 50 at one level, and then like when you go to the next level, it changes the prices to $1,000 or so, or $1,500 to house those up to 1,000 meetings or whatever.
Let's take a look at that. If, you know, if you're able to, let's maybe do a trial run, make sure everybody is in there, and to see about how many citizens, could I actually view it? That's what my concern is. It's an open meeting. I've been on numerous Zoom calls. I did not know until the last week or so that a Zoom meeting could be hyped. I did not know that.
How do you?
And they were pretty raunchy about what they said.
And the one we signed up for is the Microsoft meetings, or Microsoft Teams, or whatever, because of that reason, with the whatever. Then there was some issues there.
Yeah. So Commissioner Pearson has suggested a virtual meeting. Commissioner Taylor?
I'm in favor of looking into that, you know, into COVID-19 out there.
May I approach that?
Well, I guess you guys probably are a lot more computer savvy than I am, I think.
I'm not.
The age of sixteen, Georgia and I have had some for the land bank authority, and it can get quite, sometimes quite challenging getting signed on. And I'm afraid citizens can be very frustrated with trying to participate and trying to view the meetings, if we want them to do that, Mayor. That's my challenge. These are supposed to be open and for the public, you know. We barely have 25 people here tonight, and we have everybody spaced. So I feel better about it. I think, Mr. Pearson, seeing how it's done tonight, with our interest being taken, with the hand sanitizer, with everybody. So I'm okay with going forward, like it is, to be honest.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Like Cindy, I think we just continue on like we are. I believe that you're not going to die till your time comes. Don't know when that is. But I think we got to distance them for it. People who were right, that they could worry about distance. I don't know if we should have made certain things, but to have them like this, we've got to carry on the business. It can't be shut down and shut in. And that's my opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Galloway?
I think this brought up, you know, we had a, we were polled, what, two or three weeks ago by email about this, and my main concern probably is, as I look at Commissioner Moore, he is a senior member of our team. I think, you know, by statistics that we've all seen now for three or four months, he's probably the most at risk. And so if he feels comfortable being here, then I could say that I'll be comfortable being here as well. I appreciate all our staff for making sure that we're properly spaced and following the guidelines. And this is how I've been living for the last three or four months. When I go to public places, you know, we're distanced around people. So I feel comfortable with this kind of setup, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Durham?
With the Zoom meetings, I understand that everyone's saying that you got to sign in, but you also can do it from the City of Douglas page through it, because I was on the Zoom meeting with Bethel Family Worship Center with Pastor Dawn, and it was like about seven of us on there, but we accessed it from her page. So therefore, you could go on Facebook and look at her page and all of us on Zoom, and one was controlling, you know, the Zoom factor and everything. So it is a way that they don't have to just sign in, that you can do it from, you know, the Zoom app, but it could be done onto the City of Douglas website and just done, because that was just like, ah, about a month ago, we did that. And it was unique to me. And I know if the little cities such as Cairo and all those little cities that can do that, I mean, pretty much we can borrow their time too, to get those measures.
Okay. Good deal. That sounds like it's 3-3. I like the idea of virtual meeting. My thing is this right here, like I said, I've been on numerous of these calls, and it works fine. I do have two chief concerns. My first concern is about it being hyped, you know what I mean? Because some of the language that was used on a few of the calls that was hyped was not appropriate. I don't know if we want that type of language in our meeting. And I don't think there's a way that you can keep them out if they hike into it. Now, I'm not computer savvy enough, but the few of them that I've been on, the profanity has been pretty raunchy, and some words that were said that I will not repeat. So if I can be reassured that a citizen can have access to it, and it prevents the hiking, I'd be in favor of it, but that's my concern. If the citizens, since they're at home, the capacity is 40 or 50, with citizens sitting at the house, it could jump to 500. Or since it's being open to the public, we can have anybody in there, necessarily from Douglas, that may log in just to be disruptive. And the other thing is the capacity and to ensure that we can prevent hiking. Those are my two concerns.
May I say something?
Yes.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. The Zoom meetings that I've experienced, whomever the host is for the meeting, they can control who actually says something. So that's why, you know, what we do, if Mr. Davis could get with GMA to be able to try to address that concern we have, because we definitely wouldn't want stuff like that.
The host couldn't control it. They couldn't control it. They tried to mute him. They tried to kick him out.
Oh, because they actually had him? I see what you're saying.
Yeah, because they came in, and one, like I say, the profanity was bad.
Okay.
It was really bad. So I don't, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just on the fence. Now, I don't want us to have a legal meeting representing the City of Douglas, and there's the level of profanity and the racial slurs that was there, being broadcasted out. Now, that's my only concern.
I see that. And my main concern is, I know Commissioner Galloway stated about Commissioner Moore being the elder, the senior within the group, and that's a good point. But we have to realize, it's not only a hazard to elderly people, it's a hazard to people who have underlying health conditions. And I am one of those. So that's, you know, I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned about other people who might want to attend, who got health conditions, you know. So that's why I wanted to get it out on the table, you know.
So like I said, Mr. City Manager, if you have more information, I just need those two issues resolved. Is there a possibility, can we legally mandate our citizens if we are doing a virtual meeting? Right now, there's probably, what, four citizens in here? If that, all of a sudden, what if 500 want to get in there, and we didn't have enough capacity for them to get in? And I'm just, I'm just on the fence on that.
Well, hackers, no, there's no, that's just hackers. I mean, they do their thing, whatever. So that's, I mean, there's no proof, there's no figure of our way on that. As far as the online, I mean, that can be handled. Everybody's, you know, open up the number of slots or whatever.
Okay.
That's just mine.
So Commissioner Durham, could you help me out with these hackers? Because I'm really concerned about that. I'm really concerned about the hiking.
The hackers? They can hike Facebook, but you can't do that.
Yeah, but it's difficult for them to hike.
And the profanity, the racial slurs, we talked about that right now.
But what I'm saying is that...
We talked about that in the office that we had, videoing that, so I mean...
But right now, a citizen...
I don't get caught in everything, so I mean...
Well, right now, a citizen can't disrupt our meeting, because we're here in the present.
About the hackers?
No, I'm talking about, a citizen can't walk in and disturb the meeting.
Oh, they're right.
Right. So that's my, that's, those are my chief concerns.
When you're doing the Zoom, like the host really controls. It's like if I get out of order, and I start talking too much, the host shuts it down.
Right, I understand that, but these hackers, the three that I was in on, they couldn't control them getting in the meeting. And every time the host would click for them to get out, they'd talk like...
Well, it's probably due to their system. That's all I can think of. It must be their system, and they must be built for it, their system. Hackers will just be like that, you know, so...
Anybody else have any other comments? Anybody else have any other comments? Because I am on the fence on that.
That's fine. I just wanted to put it out there, Mr. Mayor. Like I said, I think GMA has worked out all those kinds of things. I was in a training with them last week, and that's what they said, that they were working on, get all cities to go virtual, if they want to. Just thought I would share.
Let me ask, let me ask this question here. Because I think Zoom meetings is a good idea, but I want to be able to resolve those two issues in my head. Is there, if we table this, Mr. City Manager, is there any information that you may be able to research and let us know that resolves those two issues? Or is the knowledge that you have now?
Yeah, I mean, the hacking is just, that changes daily. I mean, just like any kind of firmware, I mean, we're updating daily on penetration probes from hackers, daily. I mean, that's just a Sonic Wall, McCarthy, Norton, or whatever. I mean, they're constantly putting up. So you'll never beat the hackers. You respond to hackers, but you'll never beat the hacker enough. And on the other, like I said, the other issue is just the ability to use any of these meetings. I mean, yes, people are doing them daily. I mean, I've been, I've used them several times. The issue comes, can council department heads, you know, use it, sign in, be ready for the meetings or whatever? And like on the hacking, you just got to do it, get hacked, get hacked. I mean, that's...
Okay. This is what I'm going to vote. I'm going to vote that, since it's 3-3, I'm going to vote that we at least try the virtual and see how that works. If it's problematic, whether it's the user, or us getting the information, or being hyped, I would like for us to be able to bring it back. Is that fair?
That sounds good.
Mr. Galloway?
Mr. Moore?
Good. All right. Our next meeting will be virtual.
So the meeting for Monday night, the budget meeting, is going to be virtual?
Probably do that one.
But that's what I'm saying, so...
Yeah.
Probably the next regular meeting.
Y'all should call, I mean, we'll do whatever y'all tell us.
They're going to show a little card.
All right. We'll schedule the next regular meeting, virtual, and that'll give us a little time.
The next regular meeting is going to be virtual, a special call budget for my meeting next Monday, a regular meeting here.
Next Monday? Good deal. Next item on the agenda is discuss tomorrow night, adoption of refined council rules and protocols for meeting. Again, Commissioner Pearson, put that on. Commissioner Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, again, I just have a question, pretty much, concerning our meeting with the way that we have redefined. And we state, we state that we generally use Robert's Rules of Order. Mr. Trump has always stated that. However, Mr. City Manager, I'm trying to find out which edition of Robert's Rules are we using? Because I think we got like 11 or 12.
I mean, the most current one, which is, I, which one I think was the wrong number.
I don't know the number, I mean, whatever. You put the current one here.
Okay.
You know, that's a term that was used generally, because the real Robert's Rules is about 1,000 pages or 800 pages. And it's really written for big parliamentary type, whatever. The basic ones that we use is call to order, approval to order agendas. Those things that we normally do, have been doing for years. Like I said, you can't get in some of these huge commentary type scenarios that can go on for days, and it's really designed for daily meetings of Congress or state houses. It's really the Robert's Rules, not really designed for local governments. So that's why I said we generally use the basic concepts of call meeting orders, one votes, you know, go into these special meetings, or call special meetings, or whatever, but most current one.
Okay. And I do have the most current one. I ordered it, I think it's the, if I'm not mistaken, the 11th edition is the most current. So I did order that. So I think it would be good, if it was going to be generally based on Robert's Rules, if all of us try to get a copy of it, so we can familiarize ourselves with it. Also, I'd like to answer another question in regards to your email, Mr. Mayor, when you were saying in the email that I had not provided background information on what I was wanting. And I wasn't clear, because I know in the redefined rules that was voted upon, I'm not clear when you all refer to background information. Exactly what all, how much are you looking for? If that makes sense to you, what I'm trying to ask.
I think also in the email, I put that you are not required to do that.
Right. But I would like to, if you all want it.
But the thing is, the majority of the things that come before the Mayor and Commission, whether it's a department head, city manager, or even this rezoning, we have background information, so that we can read and be prepared if it's necessary for us to take an action on. The actions that you have on here, there's no background. So we'll basically have to wait till the actual time of the meeting to find out which road we're trying to travel down.
Yeah.
It's just about us as a council being prepared and informed, and able to be able to make an informed decision. That's all.
Right. And I knew, and like just for instance, I identified with the COVID-19. I didn't know how to, you know, really sum that up, other than I just had concerns about this meeting. You know what I'm saying? The same thing, just from right here, with the redefined councils. I guess I could put that I wasn't clear about Robert's Rules, which edition, and all of that. But anyway, it was kind of a spur of the moment thing, but that's fine.
The reason for that resolution was that actually, Michelle Woodson, the first time I served as the mayor, actually gave me this, it's much longer. I think it's about 35 or 40 pages. But we generally follow a certain protocol that we follow for at least four years, you know, as the city manager was saying. So what the intent of it was, is for us to just reduce the right of what we normally do in order for us to be able to say, okay, hey, the Commissioner Pearson has the floor. You do not need to be interrupting Commissioner Pearson. Or Commissioner Moore has the floor. The chair is able to say, hey, look, you have a three minute time, you have a four minute time limit, and have at it. With everybody being able to at least discuss the issue at least one time. However, such as in this case, you put this on the agenda. So the thing is, from my understanding of Robert's Rules of Order, is we go all the way through, and then we come back to you. You see what I'm saying? So that everybody's on the same accord, so we have a more, a more, a meeting that is regulated by us. Everything that's in there, I think it's about eight or nine pages, coming out of Robert's Rules of Order. And I understand the issue about using the most current, but what we use is so basic, it's in all of them.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So the, you know, when you do the Robert's Rules... So the, you know, when you, when you do the Robert's Rules of Order, I mean, there's just so much stuff in there. It takes a parliamentarian to be able to digest and properly impact it. I think, I think our FFA has a Robert's Rules of Order debate team.
They do. A very good one.
So the thing is, one parts of Robert's Rules of Order is, and it's in there, is if we think Mr. Moore is out of order, we can vote to have him leave. I don't think that's appropriate, you know? I think that, you know, the citizens voted him in. He should be able to speak, whether I disagree with it or we disagree with it. But I also think Mr. Moore needs to conform to the time that is set by the chair. And that's all it is. There is nothing in those eight pages that we don't do every day. That's just like, my wife tells me she loves me all the time. Well, she bought me a truck. She showed me. I'm cool with it. You know what I mean? So this was just a, a way to formalize what we already do. Cool. Mr. Taylor, you have any comments? Any comment? None? Mr. Moore, any comments?
Yes, I want to come, I do it to the light apartment. I was over there the other day and the lights went out. And I immediately, Mike happened to be there and Charles Facel, who was on sick leave, was there. And they got out looking for it. And they come back home and they got their ducks in a row and went, finally found it. And, but they sometimes get criticized. But you can't just go flip a switch. When the lights go out in the main part of Douglas and they come back home, they got to find out what caused that light to flicker. And they found them and they got it back on and, what, how long was it, Mike?
Longer than even, about forty-five minutes.
So over the city of Douglas, they come to find it wasn't really the city's problem. It was, and the city manager was in on it. They were over here at this station. And it belonged to George Powell.
Correct.
And then we can't work on George Powell's stuff. So they had to get George Powell here to find out what the problem was. And it got it resolved. And I think that's great. Y'all can write to him, Mike, I hate to do it, but I mean, it's like even here, growing up, but it was good. The city manager was in on it. I was there. I didn't go over there with him because I'm not skilled at handling hot water.
Good deal, Mr. Moore. Any comments on the Robert's Rules of Order?
Huh?
Any comments on the Robert's Rules of Order?
Oh, yeah, the Robert's Rules of Order, they change, as you said, change a lot. But basically, we go by them. And we don't make any big deal unless somebody gets shrunk out on left field. And then you try you as a conductor of the rules to try to bring them back in. So I think we should continue to do that and disrespect others that are talking. And people don't want to hear everybody talk. Three minutes is playing, act, say what you're gonna say. And so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Commissioner Gowen, your comments?
I'd have heard of Commissioner Moore. I agree with his points.
Okay. Commissioner Durham?
I just want to say that our people do want to hear from us. You know, sometimes, you know, they need to come, you know, go get to, you know, go back to the rules or whatever, or y'all want to. But I feel like if three thousand, you know, citizens vote for me, like I should be able to address them and I'm owed a duty, you know, the, the job of.
Commissioner Pearson, any final comment?
That's pretty much it. I appreciate it, guys, to come in. But, you know, I agree with Commissioner Durham. We need some redefining of the rules and stuff. So our citizens are concerned about that. I believe that, thank you for, you know, talking about this.
The next item is item number seven, review slash discuss personnel policies and procedures regarding employee grievances slash termination, et cetera. Again, that's Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Pearson, please lead us through.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And on this one, in your email, you said that there was anything that needed to be changed right now. I wasn't bringing it forward about changing anything. I just had some questions about some things that went on in the past. I don't need to name the employees that were terminated that I had a big concern about, you know, and don't need to rehashing that. But you say that maybe Mr. City Manager and myself could get together. So I'll get together with him and discuss my concerns. And we can go from there and see if we need to bring something back. But let me ask this right quick before I give my time over. I also think, or I thought, it's been a while since we met, but I thought that I had also wanted to finalize our utility committee, commissioner. You know, we changed the name of it. We said we called it something else.
Actually, we were in the process of finalizing that. But I believe Pastor Newt was gonna get in contact. I think the young lady named Shelby. What's her name?
Chastity.
Chastity, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Chastity. My bad. So because I was getting ready to appoint someone else, but she wasn't there.
Right.
So Pastor Newt said he was gonna get in contact with her. And that's what we left. Because we were ready to make a decision that night.
That's right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So if y'all get in contact with Pastor Newt, we can put it on the agenda. We can get this ball rolling.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, invite, Commissioner Taylor, you have any comments?
No, sir.
Madam, Madam Protemp, your comment?
I really, one thing I want to say to everyone is, I am really pleased with the work of the Land Bank Authority. You heard me mention that comment. We should talk about that. And I want you to stay tuned for more good things from the Land Bank Authority. Georgia Anderson and her team, our community, Dr. There, several of us. Adam White, we've had several meetings. We sold our first property a few weeks ago. And so we're excited about the opportunities. We have more people who want to donate land to that to get this. This was basically not income producing property that they and is going back to a young man, a young gentleman who is going to be doing his first rental property up in, or second rental property. And so we're really excited that our future is in place between him and his mother. And so pleasure with the entrepreneurship of that young man and with the useful and righteous authorities.
See? Stay on board.
I'm sorry.
Stay on board. Commissioner Moore, any comments about that? Good. Commissioner Gowen? Commissioner Durham? Commissioner Durham, any comments?
About what?
Item number seven.
I'm sorry, I thought this was the wrap of our remaining comments.
No. Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner Durham? You have any comments on that? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. As always, we'll turn that on to our city manager. And please be mindful for our citizens that are viewing this consent agenda is pretty long. While we've been in the phase of COVID-19, the mayor commission have made some decisions through email by majority. However, for transparency, we want to bring the guidance for the mayor commission to ratify these. Mr. City Manager, would you please read off those items that we agreed to place on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Y'all bear with me. We have nineteen items coming over. And I have my proper British accent here. We have, listen, the nineteen items, we'll start off with item one, approval of the March twenty-third, twenty-twenty meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the email, approval to purchase FY twenty new fire turnout here. Item three, approval for the purchase of FY twenty new structural fire roofs. Item four, approval of the FY twenty rerouting of fire station number one. Item five, approval of the submission of the application for the Keep Georgia Beautiful program. Item six, approval of the application for submission for the GDOT REVC grant program. Item seven, approval for submittal of the CVBG twenty grant. Item eight, approval of the Satilla Park landscape improvement. Item nine, approval of ESG engineering services passport for elevated tank at well four. Item, yeah, item nine, no, that was item nine. Item ten, approval of the pump repairs for the TNT lift station. Item eleven, approval of the ESG engineering passport for the TAB grant sidewalk project. Item twelve, approval of the submittal resolution for the CARES Act funding for Douglas Municipal Airport. Item thirteen, approval of server purchases. Item fourteen, approval of the calling of the special call budget work session and regular meeting on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty, which will be a physical meeting. Item fifteen, approval of the generator installation at the police apartment. Item eighteen, approval of the FY twenty new diesel pump for the TNT lift station, GSA contract number GS zero-seven-F zero-one-four-zero-five. Item nineteen, approval of the clearing of equipment for surplus. Item twenty, approval of the engineering contract for the water relocation on State Route Thirty-two West Tia Project. And item twenty-one, approval of the election of the GMA district officer for the twenty-twenty and the twenty-twenty-one year.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the item.
Go move.
It's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is work session items for discussion and questioning. If I'm correct, Mr. City Manager, we have two items.
Yes, sir. We have two items coming over on the regular, regular work session. This will be item sixteen, the zoning two-point-zero-two acres on Wood Valley Drive. And y'all was gonna vote, if y'all was gonna let that up or down?
Right. So we got, we got to discuss that.
The next will be first reading.
Yeah. Totally. During the work session, Madam Protemp abstained from that. So she doesn't participate in the discussion. Commissioner Pearson and Commissioner Taylor voted for. You voted against. I'm sorry. So that was one for, one against. Mr. Moore?
Against.
Mr. Gowen?
I think, if I was looking at the paperwork on it, I would vote against it based on the recommendations of staff and the planning commission.
And Commissioner Durham? I believe you voted for it. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to support what the staff in the zoning commission said to deny this application.
I'll make that motion.
It's been motioned second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. We will not read yet. Okay.
Next item, next item coming over will be item seventeen. This will be the first reading of a meeting on broker ordinance.
First, let me say this. I have a long history with this building right here. I went to one through fourth grade, right over there in that other building. This was our lunchroom building. It had no air conditioning whatsoever. There were two double doors right there that stayed open when the weather got warm. There were two double doors here that stayed open when the weather got warm. There was a livestock sale barn right over here where Harvey's is now. And guess what? We had plenty of in here. Flies. It was swarming with flies in this place. And y'all keep making fun of Commissioner Moore being old, but him and Mr. Josie gonna make a TikTok video. All right, this will be an amendment to the pawn shop ordinance. This will be an ordinance for the city of Douglas, Georgia Code Of Orders to amend city of Douglas Code Of Orders in chapter twenty-two, business, article seven, pawnbroker, section twenty-two, one-seventy-six through twenty-two, two-hundred, to provide for effective date and other purposes. Offered for the first time in regular meeting, the mayor board of commissioners, city of Douglas, Georgia, held on June eighth, twenty-twenty, and read for the second time in ordain at a virtual regular meeting of the mayor board of commissioners on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty. That's when we have to say it again.
Right. Requires no action. Thank you. Any staff comments, Mr. City Manager? No staff comments? At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been motioned second. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Stand and turn.